Okay, good morning, everyone. It is 10 o'clock. And let us get started with this Mayor Commission work session. Ms. Johnson, do you want to tee it up, please?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Good morning, everyone. Fay Johnson, City Administrator. Want to just put in perspective what the Board is going to hear this morning. The two presentations that are on the agenda are going to be joint presentations between myself and the Chief Financial Officer, Bridget Soufrant. I do want to just highlight to the Board, you know, we had a revision to the agenda yesterday whereby we took the conceptual five-year vehicle replacement plan off the agenda, in that there are additional work and working through numbers and doing due diligence that is needed on that, so that we can present the five-year plan to the Board. However, as part of the budget, the first year of that five-year plan is baked into this year's budget, so you're going to see recommendations regarding the vehicle replacement plan, although we are not presenting that five-year conceptual plan to you. The intent is that before the budget is adopted, we will have had a workshop with the Board to go over the entire plan. But the plan as it is contemplated, the first year of the plan, which is fiscal year '23, would be fully funded. And then there is a plan for how the additional years, through years two through four, how potentially we would be looking to fund those. I did want to put that in perspective, because you're going to see, as part of this presentation, recommendation for funding for vehicle replacement, but that's for FY '23, that's going to be dialed into the budget. And with that, I'm going to turn it over.
So when will we hear about years two, three, and four for the vehicle replacement?
I have to look at how we're going to be able to schedule a work session, but the intent is to have that work session prior to the final budget adoption.
Okay, which is scheduled for September 22nd?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're very welcome. Ms. Soufrant?
Thank you. Good morning, Mayor Commissioners, Bridget Soufrant, Chief Financial Officer. I am thrilled to be here to discuss our year-end fund balance for fiscal year 2021. Thank you for your patience. As we have dialed this in, it has been a long year, but we are finally here where we can discuss the year-end fund balance for 2021. So the purpose of today's presentation is to go over where we ended FY '21, but we're looking at it from the perspective of the Government Accounting Standards Board Statement Number 54. So this is a change that happened a few years ago in how we report on the financial statements with the different categories, which we'll cover today. But as you think of fund balance, that is the difference between our assets and liabilities. So really, what revenue did we bring in during the year, and what did we spend? The difference is what we added or used from the fund balance. Gatsby Number 54 requires us to break out the fund balance into five different classifications: non-spendable, restricted, committed, assigned, and unassigned. The first classification of non-spendable is those assets that we cannot spend easily or can't convert to cash. So you would typically look at that as your inventory, your prepaid's, or any advances between the funds. Second category is restricted. Those funds are restricted by an external source: federal government, sometimes grant components come into play here, or state laws and regulations. Third area is committed, and this is where we get a little more action in terms of the fund balance. Your committed fund balance is a constraint that's placed at the highest level of our local government, so something that the Commission has put in place by a formal action. In order to change or amend that, the same level of action would need to be taken at the Commission level. The example of that is the City Commission has chosen to set that we place in reserve for emergency disasters, bless you, 10% of the operating revenues of the fund balance. So that emergency reserve has to be set aside to be exclusively used for emergencies that are declared through the Mayor and the Commission. For FY '21, that amount is $17.9 million set to the side. Unassigned category is when we set funds aside that have a specific use. That use is set through the governing body or an authorized official in the committee. The fifth and final component is our unassigned fund balance. This is essentially what we can deem discretionary fund balance, or amounts that are available for any purchase. The city has chosen to go forward and place an additional requirement, which is for further financial sustainability and safekeeping, where we have said that we want to reserve a minimum fund balance requirement, which is at 3% of our operating revenues. So by setting these funds aside, we are essentially holding them in a reserve balance, and in order to appropriate those dollars, it needs to go to City Commission for approval. So for FY '21, that amount is $5.3 million. So all of those words and explanation are to bring you to the numbers. This is what you would see when you look at our financial statements for the general fund. So the column far to the right in bold, that's the total of the various categories that we just explained. So for non-spendable, we have $456,343 held in reserve in our prepaid's and inventories category. We don't have any funds currently for FY '21 that are in that restricted category, which is the legally binding, so you don't see that on here. We have $19.5 million in committed. Of that, we're reserving 1.6 for the arts and public places, as well as that $17.9 million for the emergency disaster reserve. Continuing down, we have 3.3 million of assigned funds. These are our rollover carryovers, so that's that intent for a specified purpose. If we have the open purchase orders from one year of FY '21, they carry into FY '22. Now the fun part, your unassigned fund balance. For year-end 2021, we are at $25,326,73. We pull aside that $5.3 million for your unassigned fund balance, that special 3% reserve that we want to hold, 1.6 for the real estate and landscape management funds, and then on our financials, $17.9 million for discretionary unassigned fund balance. We'll continue to talk about that on the next slide. So all in, for fiscal year '21, our general fund fund balance ended at $48,379,582. That is an increase of about $10 million over FY 2020.
Ms. Soufrant?
Yes, sir.
Who could talk to us about the real estate and landscape management fund? I'm not sure I'm familiar.
I can. I can speak to that, Mayor. So that is the fund. The Board adopted an ordinance that really set up the real estate management fund, and that's where we sell certain city property. That money goes into that fund, and we use it for things like when we had to do the cleanup of the golf course site and what have you. So it goes specifically into that fund. I think it's probably been on the books. This may be the second year, so it's fairly new.
All right, so 8111 was sold. That money will go there?
It will go there unless the Board directs otherwise.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. 314 Clematis, that type of thing?
Yes, city-owned property.
Oh, that's CRA-owned?
Yeah, well, 314, if that's CRA, it would not.
Okay, all right, thank you.
And I understand that these funds have gone through, over the years, in and out of the general fund. There've been years where it's been its own separate fund, based on how the accounting standards have changed, so showing it here under unassigned specifically called out is so that we can make sure it doesn't get lost in the overall fund balance.
And that gets spent only at the direction of the Commission, correct?
Where it gets directed, once it goes into that fund, then it is primarily used for maintaining city-owned property, you know, keeping up the maintenance of it. And the large expense out of that fund within the past year has been the golf course. And you're going to see or hear some more discussion about that when we get to the point of collecting the revenue off of the sale of 8111. You know, we're going to bring forth some recommendations on, for the Board's consideration on how to use those funds, and I'm certain that part of it will be to put some money back into that fund, because it has a very low balance.
Okay, thank you.
So as we talked about the unassigned fund balance in the prior slide, that's what you see on financials. Naturally, we are almost through fiscal year 2022. So as we look to discuss discretionary fund balance and the general fund fund balance, we want to bring you up to speed on essentially where we are today. So if we took that $25 million of unassigned fund balance from the prior slide, year-end '21, again, we pull out the 3% reserve, the real estate and landscape management funds, those carryforwards from FY '21. We come down to the appropriations that have been approved by City Commission during fiscal year '22. So all of those have been accounted for, and we had to pull out 3.3 million of the unassigned fund balance to associate to that. We then similarly look at, okay, what's that 3% minimum fund balance reserve that we require ourselves to hold to the side? What is that amount for fiscal year '22? And that's an increase of $742,000. After all of those funds are accounted for, we have $10,752,585 of estimated discretionary fund balance that we can discuss.
Ms. Soufrant, Commissioner Lambert, you had a question?
Yes, just real quick, I want to make sure I understood. The beginning balance, the $25 million, that was from fiscal year 2020?
No, 2021.
Okay. I thought the previous slide said it was 50, I was going, yeah, that 48?
On the far, the 48 is the total general fund fund balance.
Okay, so you're just talking about unassigned.
The unassigned category.
Okay, great, thanks.
And the difference between the unassigned items listed on this slide compared to the next slide is, this is what's sitting on our financials at year-end close. We've naturally had things like those FY '22 commission items that have come forward, the last two items here, those have come forward, and we need to make sure that we aren't giving a number to the Commission that we can spend that's already been allocated throughout the year. So those are here. So for talking purposes, through this process, we have this 10.7 to discuss of discretionary funding.
Thank you.
Just adding some further history of our reserves that we have here for the financial sustainability of the city, five-year history of that emergency reserve, that 10% for disasters that we hold to the side, as well as the 3% minimum fund balance reserve, for a total of $23.2 million. When we look at any type of fund balance reserves in finance, we typically refer to the Government Finance Officers Association, or the GFOA, to look for what our best practices are. The GFOA looks for you to have an estimated two months of your general fund operating expenditures on hand, and then whatever level of debt payments the community is comfortable holding in reserve. So this graph is showing all of our debt payments that are not direct-leaved, that are here on this chart, as well as the $30 million anticipated for two months of operating expenses. So comparison, $41 million, we have a fund balance of $48 million. We're doing well and above our best practices. And with that, I will turn it over to Administrator Johnson.
And that's very fine. In the future, can you give us copies of the PowerPoint, so we can look through it and see if we have any questions, rather than having to lie up on what's up there and flipping back and forth, please?
Sure.
Thank you. Any questions, Commissioners? Okay.
I'm going back purposely, so if you all would just indulge me for a couple of moments, please. I want to just point out this $48 million figure to just highlight that oftentimes, and if I can take the Board back to perhaps maybe fiscal year '20 and fiscal year '21, we were in this major tailspin about how much money we had on account for fund balance. We had this huge dollar amount in that we were in a position, a better financial position than what we indicated as a result of the pandemic, in that we had more ability to fund things, which is not accurate. That $48 million is not spendable money, so I just want to impress that, press upon the Board, you know, what we have in terms of that big number, you have to really get down to how much we have that is available, and that's the $10 million figure, so that if, you know, we start getting the questions about, you have $48 million, you know, why can't we do XYZ? We don't have $48 million that is available to actually spend and put on the street. What actually is available at this point is the $10.7 million, and that's what we're going to talk through. I do also want to just make another footnote on the FY '22 this year appropriations. Those were primarily for vehicle replacement. I think we may have bought, made two requests to the Board to purchase vehicles for the police department that was done in this fiscal year. So in terms of the recommendations for the $10.7 million...
Before you go off that last slide, where we talked, we're looking at the Gatsby requirements. There we go. So when you're looking at the estimated reserves needed, is that money that's to be spendable? Or that's just total reserves? I know we're at $48 million total reserves, but I don't want to get false optimism, because we only have $10 million that we can spend. So does this refer to spendable dollars or just total reserves?
This is, this is total reserves.
All right.
Because remember, any of those other reserves that we put into play, with the exception of the very first category of non, prepaid is the very first category. Everything else, through Commission action, we can access those funds if needed. You know, we could unappropriate a PO and not move that forward if we were in some dire need, or we could shift the emergency disaster reserve to a different issue if we were in a complete state of emergency.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Lambert?
Thank you. I think this is really helpful, and I appreciate the extra explanation of the unassigned. I think at the beginning, when you were talking about the $50 million fund balance, that you had mentioned that we saw an increase of $10 million year over year. Can you just talk a little bit about that increase?
So I did not bring the details of those numbers with me, but generally speaking, as we looked at FY 2021, we continued to see significant development revenues coming in through the city. Our sales tax outperformed what we had budgeted for the estimate amounts from the state, and we had vacancies throughout the city, so our expenditures were well under budget as well. I don't know if you have any additional...
You mean vacancies, you mean employees?
Yes, sorry, yes, vacancy savings from, from personnel positions that have been open through that process.
Thank you.
Any other questions before we move on? Okay, you can proceed. Thank you.
So by way of what we are proposing for the Board's consideration, in terms of the use of the $10.7 million, if you reflect back to the July work session, we had on the general fund, as part of Ms. Soufrant's presentation, she indicated that we had a deficit in the risk management fund, and I think Commissioner Ward raised the question, excuse me, raised the question on how we were going to cover that, and I indicated that we were looking at one-time funding. That $5.1 million will cover that deficit, so we're recommending to use it, a portion of the $10.7 for that purpose. The second recommendation is a half a million for the Small Business Assistance Program. As the Board is aware, we came out of the gate immediately during the COVID-19 pandemic with a program to provide assistance to our small local businesses, and that was in the tune of about $300,000 out of the general fund that we took from various accounts. There was a recent allocation, I believe, of about $120,000 from the general fund for the existing program that is on the books now. While the Small Business Assistance is eligible under the rescue plan, we are recommending that the Board fund a third leg of that program out of general fund discretionary fund balance to keep the funding source the same, because that gives the city the greatest degree of flexibility on how we can structure the program, and it helps to make it more business-friendly, give us a greater opportunity to actually get the money on the street. If we were to fund it out of the rescue dollars, there are an inordinate amount of regulations that comes with the rescue plan that we think will have a crippling effect on our ability to be able to get money on the street. Another consideration we're asking the Board for is to really do this particular program as a grant. When we bought the recommendations to the Board on that first piece, that $300,000, it was to be repaid as a loan. We were recommending that 50% of it be forgiven. The Board wanted or directed that it be 100% forgiven, so really, it was a grant program, and we think that really helps the program to be more effective and more flexible, and we're recommending the same if you were to support a half a million from fund balance. The other recommendation is for $2.6, $2.7 million rounded for the vehicle replacement program. And as I indicated at the beginning of the presentation, is that while we have not included the five-year conceptual funding plan as part of this discussion, we are moving forward with the first year of that plan, which would be funding it in the fiscal year '23 budget. And there are two, three components to the vehicle replacement program for fiscal year '23. The funding component out of discretionary fund balance is the $2.7 million. We have $9.6 million of critical vehicle needs for FY '23 that we want to fund. So in total, we have $2 million dialed into the general fund operating budget, we have $2.7 million that we're recommending from discretionary fund balance, and the last piece of that funding, you're going to hear in the next presentation. So Board, we are asking for your endorsement of the proposed spending plan out of the $10.7 million of discretionary fund balance. With that, I want to highlight again, this is discretionary fund balance above and beyond the 3% required under the code, above and beyond the 10% for emergency reserves that's required under the code. So the Board has full, well, you have full discretion with all of them, but this is money that certainly could be used for these types of one-time funding needs that we have. And with that, I'm happy to take questions from the Board.
Any questions, Commissioners? Commissioner Ward?
On the restructuring of the Small Business Assistance Program, is that going to come back to us to discuss the restructuring, or is that being worked on?
Mr. Hayden is here. He is going to, given the direction that comes out of this, he will then work on the redesign of the program, and it certainly will come back to the Board for approval and adoption.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
That is true. Just as we did for...
All right, Mr. Hayden, you know, you got to come up to the microphone, say your name, and...
Yes, yes.
This is not your first rodeo, sir.
Oh, please.
Mr. Mayor, Madam President, Commissioners, my name is Frank Hayden. I'm the Director of the Office of Small Women and Minority-Owned Businesses here for the fine city of West Palm Beach. As you might remember, and I think you were not here when we did this for the original program, I did bring it back to the Commission, laid out what the parameters would be, what the criteria was, and so forth and so on. And so we'll do the same for this program as well. We'll come back, we'll tell you what all the criteria are, and so forth and so on, in terms of making that available to our small businesses.
Can you follow up?
Just that, I would hope, I'd like to see what the money has got, like the businesses, and what the businesses look like today after receiving the grant.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Commissioner Warren?
Thank you. Mr. Hayden, do you know the, how many small businesses we have that are registered with the city?
Yeah, we have close to about 300-plus small businesses, and then roughly a little less than 100, which are minority and women-owned businesses.
And those are separate certifications?
Yes, they are. Yes, ma'am.
So it could, and that says, be approximately 400?
Could be. Now, you have, I'm sorry, you have to understand that some are dual, and so that's why I say it's somewhere between 150. So maybe about 50 of them are single MBEs, WBEs, and then the rest would be strictly SBs. But yeah, we'll get, provide money for each of those categories. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. And do you feel that $500,000 would be sufficient to provide the support necessary to those small and minority-owned businesses that could encourage hiring and career development within the city?
I think so. It, I think it would be sufficient for us to do what, what we have to do. And just like the other program, we'll be reporting back to you all the success in terms of that. And as you ask, Commissioner, you'll know also what they're using the money for and the success or failure thereof, of whether or not they, they reached and met that goal.
Our biggest challenge has been getting money out to these businesses.
Yeah, I was, I was...
I know you tried not to say that, but I'm just going to say that, because unfortunately...
Yes, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. And that is absolutely true. In the initial program that we have now, it is a loan program. And what we have discovered is, a lot of people don't want loans, because that just adds to their already debt that they have. And so that's why we're looking at structuring this one as a grant program. And I have been very frustrated with this whole thing, because we set these requirements so low for people to get money. I mean, it's almost like we're giving it away. But at the same token, it, it has been a difficult task for us to make that happen. But we're still working at that to provide these opportunities for businesses. And I think under the grant program, we'll have much more success in terms of making that happen.
Commissioner Lambert?
Thank you. I look forward to discussing that in more detail when it comes back to us, but I have some other questions for Administrator Johnson. Can you, I assume that these items here that we have on the discretionary spending proposal are not items that we can easily, as you mentioned before, find out of the ARPA funding? Is that correct?
Actually, the first item, clearly we cannot, unless, well, we cannot out of the rescue dollars, the $5.1 million. As I've indicated, we can fund the small business program out of. The vehicle replacement program, we actually can. If we go back to the first tranche, which we're going to review, the Board approved $6.4 million out of our first $12.2 million for vehicle replacement. The difference here is that in the second tranche, we are not, let me back up, the guidelines allow you to use a total of $10 million for revenue replacement. So we use $6.4 million the first time. So we have the ability now to use the rest of that $10 million for vehicle replacement. We have approximately $42 million in vehicle replacement needs as we sit in the Flagler Gallery right now. So given all of the other areas that we're trying to cover under the rescue plan, we're recommending the majority of that balance for vehicle replacement. But we need to, to get to $9.6 million, we also need a portion of the funding from discretionary fund balance.
I see, thank you. Thank you. And that kind of leads me to my next question, which is, we've had extensive conversations over the years about the vehicle replacement program. I'm grateful for that. Remind me, because I might not be remembering, but have we had as much conversation about the Closed Risk Management Fund?
No, that actually occurred, that deficit was in FY21. So as part of the work session we had in July, Ms. Soufrant highlighted the fact that we had a deficit in the risk management fund and that we were looking to close it. Normally, that fund has not run a deficit, but because of the increase in expenditures, we saw ourselves in a deficit for coming out of FY21. So we've not had that discussion in the past because that fund has always been balanced. But just with some of the claims that we've had to pay out, we've been hit with some big-ticket claims and it caused that deficit and we're watching it very closely. We think that for FY22, we may have, you know, some level of a deficit for this year, but we have to watch it on a month by month till we get to the end of the year to know where we end up.
Right. Thank you. I, thank you. I do remember that conversation now and I, we don't have to go into too much detail now, but it sounds like we're taking a look at that budget item moving forward to hopefully make sure we're accommodating for maybe an influx, a continued influx in claims and then as well as looking at our risk mitigation program to make sure that we're doing everything we can to help prevent some of these?
Yes. Mr. Rodriguez, if you want to speak more to that, you have a lot of the background on the details.
Yes. Jose Luis Rodriguez, Jose Luis Rodriguez is Assistant City Administrator. The issue with the deficit, we try to project as much as we can for the next year based on the current year's claims, what we think we're going to need, but there's a lot of variables that make it difficult to predict. You can't really predict how many, you know, general liability or workers' compensation claims you're going to have. And you also can't predict when you do have them, how severe they're going to be. So as part of the city's comprehensive risk mitigation and occupational health and safety program, we have actually had a reduction in claims in the past five years. We've even gotten county and other awards for being leaders in reducing incidences. However, we have had the misfortune that we have had very large claims coming in and we've also had by state statute changes, some additional claims that have been opened up for local governments now having to absorb. For example, now that PTSD is covered as a worker's compensable claim, PTSD claims, which before wouldn't have been workers' comp claims, now are. And those are, those are claims that are very difficult to predict their cost and they tend to be high-cost claims over periods of years. And depending on when the injury occurs, they could be for decades, they could go on for decades. So that makes, so what happens is at the end of the year, we have an independent actuarial analysis that is done by an outside actuary. They come in, they analyze the claims and they project the future cost of those claims. And then they say, this is how much you need to put in your budget aside to fund not only what's coming down the pike, but also the current ones that have already been realized. And that's where you start getting a projected deficit that you then have to fund towards the end of the fiscal year before the new fiscal year begins. But we are working diligently across administration, finance, risk with the departments to try to mitigate that damage in terms of cost of the city as much as possible.
Thank you. It's great to hear. And I was just having a conversation yesterday with a large company, and I would equate us to a large company, that those are growing in size. Did, in our research, have we found, are we comparable to other cities' size? Are we less or more?
I don't have the exact figure off the top of my head, but in speaking with our risk manager about this as recently as a couple of days ago, we're actually better, we're actually doing better than other local governments in terms of our incident rate, which is how you measure it. You get a percentage of, you know, how many employees and then you look at the incident rates per thousand employees. And we're actually, like I said, we've even been recognized by the National Safety Council and other local groups for our efforts in those areas. So we are doing better than most.
Thank you.
Commissioner Warren?
Is this just workers' comp or is this any case against the city for this fund?
It's a combination of both. It's workers' comp and general liability claims.
Okay.
Both comprise it.
So are we looking at, I mean, you know, just even recently discussions on one of the cases that we have against us, our deductible is extraordinarily high. Is there, is anybody looking at that as far as what we have to pay versus what our insurance covers?
We do, we do an analysis every year when we go out to renew our liability and workers' comp insurance at what the self-insured retention should be versus how much after the self-insured retention you insure for. So right now, although we have self-insured retentions that vary depending on the type of claim, 250,000, 300,000, we have the proper balance because once you, you don't want to increase your liability so much because we are having so much high-value claims, you don't want to increase the self-insured retention too much if it's going to be a minimal savings in insurance. But if a $500,000 claim hits, now raising that self-insured retention to $500,000 just exposed 100% of it coming from tax funds, you know, from city's funds.
Thank you.
Ms. Johnson, back to the vehicle replacement, I want you to set the historical context as to why we are where we are. We've got some new Commissioners on here and I think it's important even for the audience that might be listening as to how we, because I think you said what, about a $42 million vehicle replacement liability we're looking at, I mean, program?
Yes.
How did we get here?
In general, the city has not, on an annual basis, funded vehicle replacements. You know, we have not. Our practice has been, you know, that we get to a certain point where we are struggling to keep the vehicles on the road because of the number of breakdowns. And then we have done pre-funding by either getting a bond to finance vehicle replacements or gathering up one-time funding to do it. And so we would address the critical vehicle needs in that particular fiscal year or maybe in a second fiscal year. But here in the city, we have not, on an annual basis, funded replacement of vehicles. We have not had a vehicle replacement policy that was adopted. In looking back over a number of years, at one point, the committee actually made some progress on crafting a policy that would have kind of guided how we fund replacement of vehicles, but it was never finalized and adopted. So we pretty much had a hit or miss strategy.
And how many years are we talking about going back?
We did a five-year look back, Mayor, but for someone, I think Linda maybe had the longest memory here of the city. She's been here almost 30 years and she could not recall in her time where we have had as part of our practice every year where we funded vehicle replacements in our budget. As a best practice, you want to have a vehicle replacement plan that would include the funding in your capital budget. In my experience at other municipalities, St. Lucie County in particular, in Palm Beach County, we had a vehicle replacement program that was part of the capital budget. That's not to say you can't do it out of one-time funding, but we have just not had that here as far as we can determine. And Linda, if I'm misstating what we have tried to determine, certainly feel free to correct me.
What best practices are?
To annually fund the vehicles that need to be replaced based on your vehicle replacement schedule. We have a fleet management division as part of Public Works. They know based on the year that vehicles were purchased, the condition of the vehicles, age, the mileage and all of that, then they determine the years of life and when they should be replaced. We are significantly lagging in being able to replace vehicles at when they should be taken out of the fleet. And so it has resulted in significantly high maintenance costs. You know, we have been in some critical, near-critical situations with sanitation truck where we thought we were going to have to go to maybe waste management, if you will, as an example, to borrow a truck because, you know, our trucks were not being able to keep them on the road. We've had a similar scare with fire vehicles. The other component of that is that under the FOP contract, formerly PBA, there is a legal requirement that based on number of years and mileage that their vehicles have to be replaced. They have worked with the city over in the past because we have not met that. And that's part of the F resolutions that we brought to the board for funding to replace police vehicles because we have a legal obligation under the CBA to do so at a certain point and we've not been able to meet that. So given our history and where we are in terms of needs, we are looking at bringing forward a five-year vehicle replacement conceptual funding plan so that the city can then get in line with best practices in being able to keep our vehicles out of the fleet when they should go out and bringing new vehicles into the fleet. And that's what the board is going to hear when we finalize the rest of those details and are ready to present that entire plan.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? President Fox?
Thank you so much. I'm curious, when we're talking about the five-year plan for the vehicle replacements and you're also saying that we're $42 million maybe behind on where we are now, is that what we would be behind in the five-year plan or is that now and that every year we're going to be more behind? So I'm just curious, you know, if we have this other 2.5 million in the fund balance that, I don't know if we have a plan for that, assuming that we accept this proposal, but why wouldn't we just use that additional 2.5 to put towards the 42 million?
Right now, as it stands, we have $42 million in vehicle replacement needs based on schedule. We have critical needs for this year of about 9.6 million. So that is the first year of the five-year plan and we're looking at it being funded for the first year of that 9.6 million. Now, can we use the remainder 2.5 million rounded for talking purposes to put toward vehicles? Certainly. That then gets us ahead of what we would need for year two. We, even if the, if we had $42 million sitting in the bank hypothetically, and this is very hypothetically, sitting in the bank where we could then replace all of the vehicles, I wouldn't recommend to the board that we do that in one fell swoop because then when those vehicles go out every year, you got that kind of a shock to the system here. So looking at age and condition, we're doing it based on the critical ones in each year. And so when we have the five-year plan completed, we'll walk the board through it. And then what that does is it sets the city up where you have now a manageable dollar amount that you need to fund every year as opposed to a $42 million hit or $50 million hit, you know, if that were the case. But you're going to see a lot of that or hear a lot of that details in terms of how we are structuring the plan and proposing to fund it. But anything that the board puts towards vehicle replacement in the future, that means that that would just be that much less that we would have to look at funding from other sources because you would have designated money in this year or next fiscal year.
Good. President?
Is there any reason that we're not looking for not just five years but forever that in just having a line item for vehicle replacements in the future?
Well, I don't know that I'm going to be here forever. So to try to put together...
Chances are you won't.
I know, not living.
That's personal. I mean, I'm just saying, none of us will. But if I was a betting man...
I didn't mean living forever. I mean, I won't be here at the city forever.
Oh, okay.
Okay, let me qualify that. I don't know that I even have a five-year lifespan here at the city, but that being, that being the case...
No, 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 no.
That being the case, in terms of putting together a plan that goes beyond five years, in my experience, you know, it's just not effective to do so because you're looking so many years out and trying to crystal ball, you know, where we're going to be in terms of funding and then how, when, pinpointing when the new vehicles will come in and then when they will go out, that's just so far out in the future. I think we need to keep our eyes on the ball in terms of a realistic, practical timeframe and that is about a five-year window in that we then start planning. When we get to that fourth year of the five-year plan, then you're working on that next five-year plan. But certainly you can do a 10-year plan. I have seen in the past, looking at where the city did, you know, maybe a 10-year financing plan for the general fund, it's so many things happen. I mean, the plan really just become a plan really with no substance in my opinion.
And let me commend you, Ms. Johnson, for even getting on this, getting us, the city, on this track of implementing some best practices when it comes to vehicle replacement. Rather than us, you know, sticking our head under the sand and hoping that we could get through this, I think that you and your team have come to us with a concise, comprehensive plan for the next five years. Hopefully, as those best practices are employed and adopted, we get down the road, people will see the wisdom in that and say, we must continue this for the next five years, a period of time. So thank you again for even addressing this and taking it head-on. Commissioner Warren?
I just want to make sure I understand this correctly. So the 42 figure is meant to look at the five years. We need 9.6 for this upcoming year, 2.6 is getting, is going to be taken from this if we approve it discretionary and you've got the remainder and the other areas to be able to pull the 9.6. So we're basically covered at this point. We wouldn't need to be adding any more.
Right. If the board were to approve what is proposed for the 9.6 million, we'll have that first year of the vehicle replacement plan fully funded. 2 million is in the general fund budget. What we had the work session on, 2 million of that was for vehicle replacement. Then we have the 2.7 million here. The remaining 4.3 million is in the rescue plan under the revenue replacement component. So it would be fully funded. And in addition, in the proposed FY23 budget, we have the funding dialed in for police vehicle replacements to meet the requirement of the CBA. So we have two, two components of vehicle replacement in the general fund operating budget.
Okay. But both of those are included in that 42 figure?
No, not police.
Needs purposes?
Because police operates their own fleet. The 42 million that we have is for fleet that is managed by Public Works and Fleet Management. That doesn't include the police vehicles. So if we were to add their needs, that number goes way up.
Okay. But we would essentially be splitting the remainder of the 42 over the next four years?
That is the plan.
Okay.
Yes. And then we need to do a plan for police, but the intent for police is to dial theirs into the budget because it is a legal requirement under the CBA, which we've not met in the past.
Thank you.
And I just want to point out to the board that the vehicle replacement plan is not on the agenda. That seemed to...
I understand.
Oh, okay. All right.
We're going to move on to American.
We're farbored into it, but I just want to point out it's not on the agenda, so you all are taxing me, but go right ahead, Commissioner Lambert.
I think I'm going to bring it home here. So we, I just want to make sure I have a good understanding of this. We seem to be in a fortunate position where we have 10.7 million of discretionary fund balance and we have identified some areas in which we are working on risk mitigation, but we had some challenges last year with budgeting and so we're able to correct that. This year, we are working towards our five-year vehicle replacement program and also working towards our Small Business Assistance Program. And I, so then what we haven't talked about is that that leaves us nearly 2.5 million in that fun, remaining fund balance. Is that something that's on the next slide that we're discussing or is that something that we discuss at a later time?
At a later time. It is not included on the next slide. We have a number of one-time capital needs. So once we get past the proposal for fund balance, the rescue plan, when we get past the adoption of the budget and start receiving the revenue from 8111 and some of the other sale of city property, TDR funding, I'm going to look at how much we have and then based on the other one-time capital needs that we have, put together a proposal to sit with the mayor to get him to green light. put together a proposal to sit with the mayor to get him to green light. And then we'll have a work session on that. That other leg of the one-time funding capital plan more than likely will include all, most if not all, of that two-point-five million. Because we're trying to address so many uh unmet needs that we have here in the city and their one-time uh capital needs, which is appropriate when you start looking at one-time dollars to fund that. So you're gonna see a part two, you know, of a one-time uh funding plan discussed with the board. But that will be after uh the start of the fiscal year.
Thank you, and I'm appreciative that we are looking at closing the gap on some of these items that you have listed here, so thank you.
And thank you, Commissioner, for bringing that discussion home. So let's move on to item two, American Rescue Plan Act proposal. ARPA dollars.
Okay, moving right along. Again, uh, this is gonna be a joint presentation uh between myself and our CFO. And this part of the agenda is on the American Rescue Plan. I we call I say rescue dollars are ARPA uh the funding proposal. So what I what we want to cover uh with the board, uh, in addition to any uh questions and discussion that you may have, just kind of uh go over a brief overview of the uh rescue plan uh and give an update on uh what was allocated from our first uh tranche, uh walk you through the community engagement process we used for the second tranche, and then the proposed plan for the use of those funds. So with that, uh, the plan itself was enacted back in March of twenty-twenty-one. Uh, it had a couple of uh key objectives. Uh, and the plan came about related to the pandemic. So it was to fight uh the pandemic and support families and businesses uh that uh as a result of that was struggling with public health and some of the uh economic uh impacts that it had. Another objective was to help maintain vital public uh services. Uh, again, amid uh the decline in revenue. And we know for our experience, that was about seven-point-one million dollars in revenue loss for FY twenty-one. And then to help build a strong, resilient uh communities with an emphasis on uh equity. Uh, all of the funds, by way of the requirement, they must be obligated uh within the statutorily required period of March eleventh, twenty-twenty-one, and December thirty-first of twenty-twenty-four. Now, they have to be expended by December thirty-first of twenty-twenty-six. So we have those two uh thresholds uh that we're looking uh to comply with. Uh, the plan, like all federal grants, have extensive quarterly uh reporting requirements and then also uh an annual single uh audit uh compliance review. So in terms of the eligible uh categories, certainly the uh public sector revenue, and you hear us refer to it as uh revenue reimbursement, that would be that seven-point-one million, but it allows you a maximum of ten million. Uh, public health and economic uh response, uh premium pay uh for our essential workers, and then water, sewer, and broadband infrastructure. So putting it into uh context with what the board approved, uh, we were approved for twenty-four-point-five million dollar allocation. We got the first uh allocation back in uh May of twenty-twenty-one, or the first tranche, as the federal government likes to term it. And that first tranche was the twelve-point-three million dollars rounded. And our second tranche is in an equal amount. So when we look at what uh the board approved in terms of the first tranche, all of the first tranche was used for internal city needs. Uh, the board approved that six-point uh four, six-point-nine million talking purposes of revenue reimbursement, which we use specifically for uh vehicle replacement, which was a critical need. Uh, four-point-five million for premium pay. And then under uh public health uh for vaccines and then funding for a grant administrator who would oversee the uh reporting, monitoring, and compliance. I'm gonna step back to premium pay. As you uh may recall, and Commissioner Ward was not on the board at that time. The premium pay, what the board, we had two categories. Uh, one was a tier-one category, which was a thirty-eight-hundred-dollar, and it's a lump sum payments. And then the second category of twenty-five uh hundred dollars uh for city employees who were eligible. So then we talked about the revenue loss uh going on to premium pay. This just lays out the administrative requirements. Uh, employees had to be onboard with us on our before October one of twenty-twenty. And then uh as part of their job duties, work routinely the majority of their time during the pande pandemic uh period. I went through the two different categories. And again, this is one-time, non-pensionable lump sum payments that they received. We talked about uh the public health and what that uh included. Uh, the vaccine component, uh employees uh who were eligible uh got a five-hundred-dollar uh incentive uh for getting vaccine. And if you go back to where we were in the country, vaccine was the big thing, trying to get as many people vaccinated as possible so that we can slow down the spread of COVID nineteen. Uh, under our program, they had to have received the vaccine after March thirtieth, and that was by uh the guidelines. Uh, we indicated that they had to be fully vaccinated by December thirty-first of twenty-twenty-one. And of course, you had to provide uh proof of vaccination uh to uh the HR department. And if they met those requirements, they receive the premium pay and then also the vaccine pay if they were eligible uh for both. So in terms of reporting out, uh, how do we do with that first tranche? Of course, from the revenue uh replacement money, the six-point-five million, uh, we were able to replace fifty-five vehicles, so that made a huge uh impact. And I want to thank the board uh for supporting that uh first portion of the tranche for vehicle replacement. Under the premium pay, uh, we distributed uh twelve-hundred-and-twenty-eight payments uh to city employees, uh, under the vaccine, uh, eight-hundred-and-fifty-four. Uh, so I think the money was very well uh spent and had a significant impact uh here within the organization. So again, just by way of a summary, the first tranche, we focused solely on our internal needs. Uh, with the second tranche, what the board is gonna hear in this proposal is a balance between city internal needs and community needs. One of the uh objectives that the federal government is stressing is to try to get as much of this money out into the community or at least a good portion of it out into the community. And given that uh we address internal needs, the first tranche, we are going to propose the use of some of this money uh for out into the community. So with that, uh, the second tranche, we launched it by uh doing a community survey that was open to the public so that they could provide input on how they would like to see the funding used. And that uh community input window was from June twenty-second of uh this year through July twenty-second. And at this point, I'm gonna turn it over to Ms. Soufrant uh to pick up uh the other portion of the presentation. I'll pause here to make sure that uh there are no questions.
Any questions uh to this point? Okay, Commissioner Warren?
How was the how was the community survey um distributed? How did the the community know that this opportunity existed for them to weigh in?
That's gonna be part of Mr. Soufrant's presentation. Yeah, we didn't do so. You ready?
Any other questions for Ms. Johnson? Okay, proceed. Thank you.
Good morning again, Bridgette Soufrant, Chief Financial Officer. Um, Commissioner Warren, we launched, if you may remember during the.
Let's speak closer to it.
We need taller mics, sir.
We'll work on that. Put your request in. See if we can afford it.
It's gonna be in the one-time funding.
Is that a one-time thing or, you know?
Oh, excuse me. So during the community budget meetings, um, we launched that same day on July twenty-second. In that presentation, we launched communication about both the um the ARPA survey as well as seeking input from the public for the budget. So during that time, we had the communications office that put out, I have a total of, I believe it was four different press releases that went out leading up to those budget meetings, um, as well as the sliders, the posters throughout the community, um, on the website. It was posted during the regular commission meetings. It went out in multiple of the newsletters for that entire month. It was in the newsletter. Communications also put the ARPA slide on the homepage as a slider on the city website. So that is, they highly publicized that um survey throughout the process.
Did that answer your question, Commissioner?
Yes, thank you.
Commissioner Lambert?
As I am aware that this is not the topic of this uh this agenda, I would, however, like to discuss that further in the future. I know that I had emailed with you, Administrator Johnson, about some concerns about that, just that I didn't feel like we got the number of responses that we should have. Um, and and I do have some ideas for it, but I realize now is not the time to discuss that.
So noted.
Thank you.
So as we transition into the second tranche um and discussing the proposed uses, I would like to take a moment to thank Linda McDermott for her work as she has consolidated and put together all of this information from the departments. She has watchdog, birdh- bird eye, I don't know what the the names are right now. She has been watching anything ARPA that comes through in the media, reading it, logging it, and recording it through this process. And um that has been great help, wealth of information. Also thanking the department directors and their contributing team members for all of the ideas that they submitted for us to consider and to look through and to present um to Ms. Johnson. Special shout-out to HCD for allowing us to use the community survey platform, BERT, and getting that out quick and in a hurry. That that was a great process working with them and the communications team for all of their work in getting the information out and being dedicated to as many resources as we could to try and receive that community input. Um, and ARPA really has challenged the finance team in a different way because a four-year grant of this magnitude with this many components on the auditing side, the budgeting side, we've had a lot of collaboration internally on that. So I appreciate the team working together through that. And to the community, um, as I'll report on the the people who responded to have in a month time period the number of responses that we did, I appreciate that people took the time to communicate their priorities and to share their feedback. So we heard you, and we are now bringing this forward. So we asked the community to choose their top three priorities out of this six eligible categories. I know there's four eligible categories for purposes of analyzing the data. We broke them out into six, so we have six categories here. That survey was live for one month. Based on the timing, that was um the length of time that we could leave it open. We had ninety people respond and share their um priorities. And after choosing those top three priorities, they had an open box where they could leave us a comment or share any, you know, opinion, any suggestions, anything that they wanted to detail. And we had six um open comments. And I feel like that number is somewhat deceiving because I will tell you, some individuals chose to say five different comments in the one box. So there was some good good responses through that. So, you know, this is definitely a complicated topic. And we did what we could in the survey to provide a brief explanation for the individuals that were choosing to participate, that these are the categories you can choose from. Here is a sample or an idea of how they could be utilized. We made sure to say this is not what we are proposing or recommending, but we wanted to give you an idea of what could fall into this category. So this is what they saw. Okay, so bear with me as I I get a little geeky into the data analysis. When you have the priorities where we're asking people to choose their top three, you do not get a traditional percentage that we can talk about. You utilize a weighted average. So in that, you have the water and sewer infrastructure category that received the highest number of priority ratings as well as um the most number of ratings in general at one-point-five-one for a weighted average. Then we have public health at one-point-two-nine, economic response at one-point-zero-three, zero-point-nine-seven for broadband infrastructure, zero-point-seven-two for premium pay, and zero-point-four-eight for revenue loss. So I wanted to do my best to share with you some of the comments that we received. So in reviewing them, I tried to break them out with what category they were generally speaking of. I just grabbed two of um for each category. Please know they weren't filtered. I just simply had to pick a category that they worked with. And as you can imagine, not everybody understands what is eligible. So they're here, we're sharing the information. Um, and as we worked trying to find what aligned strategically, that is key as we look at water and sewer infrastructure. So for the concept that from a public perspective, water and sewer was the highest-rated priority. For the mayor and commission to understand, your public utilities have a greater number of options for different funding sources as it relates to the pandemic and the different bills that have come out of the federal government. So your public utilities has more funding sources than we do in general government. So you have not seen many communities come forward allocating those ARPA dollars that are the once-in-a-lifetime funding source for general government that we typically do not allocate that towards water and sewer, is what we have seen. So for the public and for the mayor and commissioners to understand, that is a strategic um decision that they have different buckets of funding they can receive. With that being said, I will read a few of the open comment samples. For water and sewer, we had comments of delivering safe and high-quality water and water operations is a priority. Clean water and proper sanitary systems should be first. For public health initiatives, use the funds for partnerships that will elevate equity in health, safety, and well-being outcomes for all people and direct support to housing and homelessness. For economic response, economic support for small, local, and black-owned businesses should be prioritized. Business grants offered for small businesses to expand and grow in West Palm Beach. For broadband infrastructure, provide hotspots in low-income areas of the city as Wi-Fi is critical to all residents. Under premium pay, keep your really good employees. That is what will make the city stand out above all others. An appropriate pay for public employees. Under revenue loss, there were multiple comments about additional paving and sidewalk repair, which you will hear more about. But again, with the infrastructure bill that's coming out, different buckets of money just for the public and the mayor and commissioners to understand. And then uh that final comment of direct funds towards neglected infrastructure.
Do we have any way of determining whether people who commented on that were actual residents of the city?
I'm trying to remember the setup. I know we asked name. I know we asked for email. Did we ask for address, Jen? Zip code, okay.
We asked for zip code? Okay, thank you.
So in reviewing.
Commissioner Ward has questions.
I'm so sorry. Is there, because I've been thinking about that the entire time you've been talking, um, because I was trying to remember when I answered whether I had to put my address in. Is there a way to map it out and show via zip code who responded? Because it's like the time, you know, if we're looking at survey results, your first thought is who's actually responding? If you took a company and put all the top executives in and surveyed them and took the lowest and surveyed the lowest paid, you're gonna get different answers to that, the same questions. So are we looking at who actually responded for basis? I I I like all these, and I do think these are priorities. I just want to make sure when we're responding to a survey that we're looking at who provided those answers.
I know for a fact it was name, Jen. I don't know if you want to speak.
You mean by neighborhood or district?
Yeah, area, because again, the broadband issue is a huge issue. Historic Northwest, Coleman Park, Pleasant City. You go over there and there's literally no reception at all. So I understand that being, but I think it might have been high. You know, it just, again, I like all of these responses. again, I like all of these responses and I think they're needs. I just want to make sure that when we're basing data, that we have looked at who answered it.
Commissioner, great, great comment and great question. For the record, Jennifer Fariel, Housing and Community Development Director. So we just started to implement the community engagement process for the city. That has been the first and foremost, the most initial step in moving forward with ensuring that we are gathering the feedback from the residents and then making informed decisions based on the data. We will have to do that moving forward, something, you know, something to that extent to ensure that we are, you know, making decisions appropriately, as, as you stated, with the specific districts and what the needs of those districts are. Data review and, and the data, processing that data, that's another step that we haven't quite really reached yet, just because we've been so focused on getting a plan out there, training the staff, and really, you know, testing what works and what doesn't work. We're still trying to figure out this new process that is not a, a scientific process. It's something that we're simply trying to test out. And so that comment and that feedback is something that we will definitely incorporate and consider when we're collecting data moving forward. And, and also just to, to make a quick statement, and I'm sorry, Bridgette, I don't want to take off your mic. You know, we also want to make it so that residents feel encouraged to respond. If we ask too many questions, they may not want to respond. So sometimes, you know, we just want to have that balance. Because if you ask me full, full address, I'm not going to give you my full address. So we may not necessarily get the responses that we want because we're asking for too much information.
Maybe even just neighborhood.
Sure.
You know, that's generic enough.
Well, zip code should help us do that.
It will. Yeah.
But my zip code, for instance, you have very wealthy and also very impoverished areas. And so I feel like narrowing it down even by neighborhood within the same zip code may even more accurately reflect how people respond.
Like 25th and...
Well, I mean, you've got, in my district, just in general, I'm in Northwood Gardens. You've got Old Northwood, Northwood Shores. You've got Pleasant City. There's just so many different neighborhoods. You've got Legacy, so.
And we may need that.
I don't know if that's every district. I just know in mine, neighborhood means something.
And we may, you know, every engagement is different. And so we're learning on, you know, what engagements require what type of data to be collected. So it may be necessary for some engagements, for others, we may just need your district. It'll really depend. But we are learning. It is a, a learning process for all of us. Thank you.
I mean, going back to the weighted average, that was like back in school. Let me, let me analyze. This is not a percentage. What are we dealing with, with the numbers? So thank you, Jen. So as we reviewed the data and the community survey and the information that's been presented from the departments, as well as the strategic and ongoing initiatives in the city, we truly did try to pair together some of these comments and, and the feedback in this process. And we are bringing forward for your consideration some ideas for this second tranche of funding. Okay, bear with me. This is where we start getting into the numbers again. So Ms. Johnson discussed the $10 million of revenue loss that can be allocated. We used a large chunk of that in the first tranche. We have 5.4 left. Of that 5.4, we are recommending to allocate 4.3 towards the vehicle replacement plan, which we've been talking about. The 1.1 remaining, we will discuss on the next slide. There's also balancing with these vehicle replacements, costs continue to go up. And so we had a fifth EMS unit in the first tranche that we couldn't fully fund based on increased costs. So we're allocating an additional $200,000 from the second tranche to close out those EMS vehicles. We are recommending 1.6 million out of the public health funding category towards Roosevelt Estates for sidewalks and pedestrian bridge at Westward, Westward Park. We are looking to allocate 2.5 million out of the public health grouping towards Gaines Park Aquatic Center. And for the remaining funding items, I will turn it over to Administrator Johnson. Oh, I'm so sorry, I didn't hear you.
Thank you. I want to just highlight a couple of footnotes here. On the recommendation of the 1.6 for Roosevelt Estates, that Roosevelt Estates as a priority project is in the strategic plan, so I wanted to just highlight that. And on the 2.5 million for Gaines Park, if the board will recall, we bought back, we bought a request to the board to take 1.5 million from Gaines Park to the Coleman Park project because of the increase in the construction costs there, on the condition that we would find funding to replace that 1.5. So part of that 2.5 is the 1.5 million we took from Gaines Park. The additional million dollars is to cover anticipated increase in construction. You know, given the market now, everything has gone up. And so we're trying to plan for that. So that is why we have the 2.5 million there for Gaines Park as opposed to just 1.5 million. So moving on to the last two categories of 1.5 million for public health and economic response. This includes 1.1 million out of the revenue loss category to bring it to 2.6 million. And in this particular category, we will be looking at cities' sidewalk repairs, park trails throughout the city. But they have to be in areas that meet that low or moderate income designation or the, what's the designation under OPERAS? Not low-mart. They use qualified census tracts. Yeah. Qualified census tracts or low-mart income areas. We have identified at this point in, on Spruce Avenue and Pinewood Avenue, a number of sidewalk repairs that are needed. We know that those are qualified areas. So that is identified. We still have additional work to do throughout the city to identify other areas that would be eligible. We do think in some of the areas where the, the area itself may not be designated as a qualified census tract or a low-mart income area, but because the activity that is provided serves primarily a population that falls within those income category, that we could spend money in those areas. But there is a documentation process that we have to go through. So at this point, board, we are not in a position to bring forward a recommendation on the entire 2.6 million that we would be looking at parked in trail sidewalk repairs throughout the city. We will bring that back to you if you were to support this particular funding level for this capital infrastructure repairs. And then the last category that we want to discuss with the board is designating a million dollars under the public health economic response category for nonprofit support programs. And under this particular category, what we will be looking to do, there are a number of eligible types of activities that we could fund. What we will be looking to do is to design a process to put this money on the street for eligible nonprofits to submit proposals for how this funding could be used. As an example, we would go through maybe a process for, a request for qualifications. We would then qualify the nonprofits based on the criteria and then allow them to do an invitation to bid on what the specific activity that they're requesting funding for. We would have presentations to the board to then, to approve the agencies that, in their, their program for the funding. So you would have agencies that are involved in housing and homeless assistance. We know that that is a, one of the mayor's and board's priorities. It's a critical issue here within our city and across the country. We still have families who are dealing with food insecurity. An example that would come to mind would be food banks would be eligible to participate. And then the last category as an example for gun violence-related initiatives, this would be an agency like PAA, the Police Athletic Agency, that works with our kids to keep them, you know, occupied after school and not involved in, in some of the nefarious activities that they could be involved in. So those are just some of the examples of what would be included if we were to designate the million dollars for nonprofit support programs. And there are probably a host of others that they would be eligible to submit a proposal on. And with that, I will turn it over, Mayor, to you and the board for discussion and questions.
Any questions, Commissioners? Commissioner Lambert?
Thank you. Do you have the overview of each of the amounts in the proposed uses?
Just on one slide?
Yes.
I do not.
Okay, okay. That's okay. Um, in, in the beginning, it also said the date that we would receive these funds. Is there a, a timeline of when we would need to use them?
We have already received the funds. We have to have them obligated by December 31 of 2024. We have to have the funds spent by December 31, 2026.
And if we were to approve and move forward with these different groupings that you've proposed, then like on this slide, we have a number of different areas that you said we would then get into the specifics. When would that, those specifics and details be finalized?
Well, I can't give you a set timeline. I will tell you by process what we would do. We would then develop the request for qualifications and outline all of the, the criteria that the nonprofits have to meet. Then we have to put it out on the street. So that's a time element that would be involved. And then get the proposals back.
But I'm not even, I don't mean to interrupt you, but I'm, you were even further than I was, I was even saying, like, so for this housing and homelessness assistance, if we said, yes, we want to do 1 million to public health and economic response, are we going to have further discussion on what this looks like in houseless, housing and homelessness? Or is that up to staff?
Well, what, what we're proposing is, because this would be as proposed, designated for nonprofits to bring forward proposals. So this would be one of the eligible categories under, that they could submit a proposal for. And based on what comes back that is eligible, that would then be presented to the board. So you may have two or three agencies that submit for housing and homelessness assistance. Staff would not determine that. It would be driven by a competitive process.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions? By the way, can you make sure that we receive copies of these PowerPoints?
Absolutely.
Please. Any other questions on, on, on this item? Are we clear on the process from here on out? Now, what are we looking for next steps? We don't take votes here. So you're looking for guidance. I mean, are head nods acceptable?
Yeah, just consensus from the board on endorsement of the plan. And then we probably would do something that we did similar to in the first tranche, bring it to the board for formal action and adoption at a city commission meeting. And on a parallel track, we would start, staff would start working on processes.
Okay.
So that we could gear up.
Commissioners, are we comfortable with the direction which we're headed? One head nod, two head nods in the hand? Okay, Commissioner Lambert?
I am. I'm just, since there's not one slide that kind of summarizes it, do you mind just hitting all the high points of the amount in each of the areas again?
Oh, absolutely. So, let me just go back here. We have, as proposed, 4.3 million for vehicle replacements. I'm going to say 4.5 million because that then picks up the EMS vehicle. 4.5 million for vehicle replacement. 1.6 million for Roosevelt Estates. 2.5 million for Gaines Park Aquatic Center. 2.6 million for capital infrastructure. And then the remaining 1 million for nonprofit support programs. And I apologize for not putting those on a list. We will get a, a whole list out to the board of those categories and the proposed funding amounts.
No problem. Thank you.
Okay, I will return to my previous question. Are we comfortable in the direction which we're headed? I've had, we had not, okay. We can continue in that direction, put together the process, and we'll get back to the commission at the appropriate time.
All right. I want to thank the mayor and the board as well as the staff. It's been a lot of work that has gone into this, a lot of review and embedding. And I want to also thank Mrs. Soufrant for her leadership on this as well, and then certainly Mrs. McDermott.
Okay, I think we also, do you also need direction on the use of the reserve funds?
Yes.
All right. So Commissioners, the fund balance proposal that was submitted, I don't know if you remember it, I don't know if you have a summary slide you could put up. Are you comfortable in heading in that direction? I probably should have taken a consensus, taken your temperature before we moved ahead, and I apologize for that. You have your hand up? Commissioner Lambert, has your hand up?
Nope, I did not.
Oh, you didn't have your hand up? Oh, okay, you're comfortable, okay. I am so used to seeing you. Yeah, so, okay. Okay. So you have the direction you, you need for both?
Yes, I do.
Okay. Thank you all very much. I don't have anything on the mayor's matters. Commissioners, you have anything for the general good of the body? Hearing none? Okay, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, staff. Good work, great work. Thank you Commissioners for your attention.